Amy, we don't have minutes to approve from work session, do we?
For work session, no. We'll just need to do attendance in the virtual meeting.
Okay, everyone, we'll, we'll try to get started. I'm sure we'll probably have some other people maybe be joining in for us. Like to call the meeting, it's a work session of the county commission. The order. First order of business is to, we need to entertain an emotion to hold this meeting virtually electronically. That's part of the regulations that allows us to do this. Do we have a motion to conduct this meeting electronically? My Mr. Harsh. Have a second by Ms. Atwood. And all in favor, let's do a roll call, please. Amy, you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Too many meetings tonight. Beverly Atwood.
Yeah.
Mary Ann Baker.
Yes.
Ken Buckmaster.
Yes.
Shane Burton.
Yes.
Gary Clarity. Mayor, can you hear us?
Mr. Clarity, can you hear us? We don't hear you. I think we froze up at the courthouse.
I believe you are correct. Do you want me to go on or wait?
Yeah, go on and we'll come back.
Okay. Koi Dickey.
Let me remind you all, if you're at a computer and to take your microphone off mute, just hit your spacebar and hold it down while you talk and then you release it and you're back on mute. Mr. Dickey.
You might want to let them know what we're voting on.
We're voting to be able to have the meeting by electronic means. Go on, Amy.
Mel Ferguson.
Yes.
And Jerry Ford. I think they're still having issues on.
Now, at least it's not frozen. Mr. Ford. Mr. Clarity, Mr. Ford. We're asking for a vote on holding the meeting by electronic means.
Mayor, if you can hear us, you are muted. Want to move on? Landon Gully.
Yes.
Richard Harsh.
Yes.
Dwight Jewell.
Yes.
Richard Johnson and Rachel Jones are absent.
Mr. Whitaker.
David Knoller.
Mr. Knoller, you'll have to unmute yourself. Hold down your spacebar and talk. Amy, can you unmute him? I can't.
Okay, yes.
Okay.
Amber Russell.
Yes.
Lonnie Taylor. Do not see him present. Gary Walsh.
Yes.
Steve Whitaker.
Mr. Whitaker, we need a vote, a yes or no. You're muted. You need to hold the spacebar down on your computer. The big bar.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dickey, are you with us now?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes. I need to hold on whether to hold the meeting electronically, a yes or no.
Yes.
Thank you. Did we ever get the courthouse online, Mr. Ford, Mr. Clarity? Mayor, you're still muted.
I am on the phone with mayor. We're trying to work out some.
Okay.
Sound.
While we're doing these votes like this, it might be best just to unmute everyone while we're taking the vote.
When Zoom updated, I'm not able to do that.
Okay, never mind.
I know.
The coolest thing I've found is the spacebar.
Apparently that was an invasion of privacy when we were able to unmute everybody.
Oh.
So Zoom updated.
Uh huh, okay. That makes sense. I understand. Okay, I think we're through with our roll call. I think we have enough here to conduct our meeting. We don't have an agenda to prove. What we're going to do is go over the agenda for next week's meeting. Mr. Buckmaster, have you down for invocation?
What was that?
I see a nod for yes and Ms. Atwood, the pledge.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll do our roll call. It'll approve our minutes from the November 23rd meeting. Has anyone noticed any issues with those minutes that you'd like to bring forward now? If you notice anything in the next week, please get with Amy so we can correct them prior to our meeting. Anybody noted anything? Okay. Couple of things on announcement. Statement, statement of interest form to the state.
This, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Chairman Jewell, this is trying to see if we got the audio on.
It's working right now.
Sorry about that. It froze up when let's use any of the microphones. We had to get out of the program and get back in.
Okay. It, it froze up video and everything and then the video came back on, but it seems like the audio didn't.
It's saying the feed here of the internet connection at the courthouse is unstable, so we're having some issues, but that's the first time it's done that with the microphones. It wouldn't recognize any of the microphones we have available. Not on the webcam, not the ones I'm using, the Yeti that's pointed to the PA system, but like I said, we signed out, signed back in, so hopefully that'll fix the issue.
Okay, we appreciate all your efforts on it, Mayor. Statement of interest form for the state of Tennessee, the elections. You should have received a letter pertaining to that in the mail. The deadline on that's January 31st. If you have questions about it or need assistance with that, Amy will be glad to help you. Make sure that you get that in on time. Pretty simple. You can either print out a form and mail it or you can do it online if you can figure out how to get into their system. I haven't done. I haven't figured it out yet, but maybe you're smarter than me. But anyway, we need to get that taken care of. Also, I'd like for us to just take a minute and think about Commissioner Johnson. He's still currently in the hospital. Well, he's out of the hospital. He's in rehab. Now, I talked to him today and he is feeling much better. And he wanted me to make sure and let y'all know that he misses everyone and wanted to be here with us. So just wanted you to be aware of his situation. I know that we've had several commissioners that have had COVID or their family members have had COVID. It still is raging here in the county is one reason we're trying to continue doing this meeting this way. We were hoping to be able to have the commission meeting in person next Monday night. I don't think that's going to be possible. We will probably make a final decision on that somewhere before the end of the week. But I'm afraid that right now we're going to be back online in a hybrid situation because still we're not supposed to have group meetings of over 10. Is anything changed on that, Mayor?
Yes, sir. I'm going to address that when I get in the governor's report, I mean the mayor's report, but I can do it now if you prefer.
Since we're already intro'd into it, if you don't mind.
I received an email at 4:01 PM this afternoon from Governor Lee's office. He is not going to extend the 10-person limit on social gatherings. That will expire at midnight tonight. And just along with that, I am going to reopen the administration building on Thursday at 8:00 AM. Our COVID numbers have dropped. We currently have 63 active cases and over the last 10 days, we went from 10.2 cases per day down to 3.4, so we're looking really good there and I expect by Thursday, we should be somewhere around 47 active cases would be the lowest we've been since about December 12th. So we are looking better in that count. As I said, Governor Lee is not extending that prohibition on salted gatherings over, over 10, so.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that. I didn't get that, but I think we shall, right now, like we've said all month, we hope that we can meet in person at the courthouse. Certainly, if you feel uncomfortable doing that, don't come. If you've been in close contact with someone with COVID or you're in a quarantine situation, don't come. We will try to make arrangements. Just let us know your situation if you possibly could. But based on that, I guess we'll go ahead and plan on having our regular meeting at the courthouse unless you hear differently. Is everyone okay with that? This means yes, this means no. I see more, I see no, no, so I know we still need to be careful with this. It's, it's not over. But at least we're going the right direction. Thank you, Amber. I think that's about the only announcements I had. Did want to make everyone aware. We talked about it in budget finance last hour. Our sales tax numbers are still holding strong. We actually had about $11,000 increase over December, actually November sales, December's revenues over last year. And we're ahead year-to-date versus year-to-date last year, $54,000 and that does, that is both the county and the, the scoop. That's total sales tax revenues, which that'd been one of our biggest concerns was how COVID was going to affect sales tax revenues. I think the reason they're holding strong is because we're beginning to get the revenues from the online sales. And I think that's been the silver lining to this whole situation financially for us. Are there any other announcements? Any commissioners, do you have any announcements? If there's something that we need to announce next week, please get it to me and I'll make sure that we, we do that. Right now, I don't think we have any amendments to the agenda that we sent out. Amy, Mayor.
No, sir. I believe everything we need to have addressed is in here. There will be some items that we had to address, but they can wait till next month. So we have no amendments to the agenda currently.
Okay.
And Rita will have some notaries to add.
Okay, that's not an issue. Citizens' response to the agenda items, we'll call for them to come sign in. Mayor, you want to get into your report?
Well, one of my items we've already covered, that was Governor Lee's executive order on the in-person gatherings. Another item I already covered, I'll mention it again, and we are going to reopen the administration building on the Thursday, so two days from now at 8:00 AM. We think by then, looking at the trend in numbers, we should be down to around 47 active cases by then. As I said, just sometime last week, we were at 10.2 active cases, new active cases per day. And as of today, we're down to about 3.8. So that's a tremendous drop. And we went from a high of 108 cases down to 63 today. We expect that to be around 47 on Thursday, so we are going heading in the right direction. I will caution that again, if the case is rising again, we could close the building, but and I will caution everyone, there are several new variants of the COVID-19 that seem to be more contagious than one we've been dealing with. They don't seem to be any more deadly. They're just spread easier, so we could see a rise there that a lot of people think that could have been the reason for the rise we've seen, but time will tell. And a lot of the things I was going to address in the mayor's report are actually items as we go through the agenda, so Mr. Chairman, I'll just address those when we get to them. It's items under appointments and resolutions and the budget amendments. I'll just address those when we get to them.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Jewell, you're muted.
That's because my dog has gone crazy. Okay. She wanted to join in on the conversation there with the mayor. Okay, next, the committee reports, the ones that I have. Steering Committee met today, met on January 5th. Economic Development, January 7th. Personnel met on January 7th. Purchasing met today. Budget Finance met today. And are there any others that met last month that I'm missing? Okay, I don't see anybody jumping up and down. Get into our active business. We have appointments and reappointments. I think pretty much most of the appointments are reappointments. We have Beer Board appointment for a four-year term. Bobby, Bobby Joe Lewis, that's a reappointment. Board of Agriculture, these are two-year terms. Rita Cornwall, Jerry Ford, Landon Gully, William Beasley. Those are all reappointments. Board of Zoning Appeals for a four-year term. Mark Harper is a reappointment. Myself, I filled out an unexpired term. Continue on, on the BZA. Health Officer, four-year term Kathy Atwood, that's a reappointment. Highway Commission Bobby Joe Lewis, that's a reappointment to a two-year term. Planning Commission, a four-year term David Knoller is a reappointment. On the Water Utility Board, we have Craig Moreland for a reappointment. The mayor's put together a downtown grant scoring committee. He would like to appoint three members to that, Jerry Ford, John Oliver, and Mark Presley. And then our TCHF student representative, we had one person apply. The mayor and myself will be talking with him, I believe, this Friday at 3 o'clock. Any of y'all that would like to come and sit in on that, you're more than welcome to. We're just going to talk to him, let him know a little bit about what they'll be doing, what's expected of them, that sort of thing.
Amber Russell has her hand up.
Ms. Russell, you have a question?
Hey, yeah, I was just curious, what's the downtown grant scoring committee?
I was going to let the mayor explain that. Mayor, could you explain that?
Yes, sir. The county got into the Department Economic Community Development's Tennessee Downtown Program. It is a downtown revitalization for rural communities. As part of that program, they have, there is a 15,000, we're up to $15,000 reimbursable grant. This committee is required as part of that grant. They are to score applications coming in to determine which program, which projects will be funded. So this is a requirement under that grant and under that program. Mr. Oliver and Mr. Presley are on that Tennessee Downtown Steering Committee for the community. And Jerry Ford, selecting him as a member of the Budget and Finance Committee since this will be going through the county. We looked at 501(c)(3), but there was none of them organized to meet ECD's requirements. And so they asked that the county basically be the pass-through for these funds and we agreed to do so. And as I said, this, this scoring committee is a requirement under that program.
That answered your question, Commissioner Russell. Have any other questions pertaining to that or to any of the appointments? All right, we'll move into resolutions then, having no objection. First one. Resolution 2021-01-705. This is a resolution on an extension of vacation benefits to jail guards due to COVID. They were spread so thin that they weren't able to be able to take their vacation leave prior to the end of the year. The sheriff has requested that we try to extend that, I think for, was it four months through April?
Yes, I think the first quarter of this year.
Right, through April 30th is what this says. So it only applies to the jail guards. It does, it's not written for all Sheriff's Department employees or county employees. This seems to be their only area that we've really had an issue with this. And this did go through Personnel Committee, I believe.
Yes, sir.
And it was approved and sent forward from that committee to the full body. Any questions on it?
I did talk to Sheriff Russell a little bit earlier tonight and he said all his people that would be taking advantage of it have already put in their leave request and they will all meet the April 30th deadline, so there should be no issue of getting that in in the first quarter.
Good deal. Okay. Any questions? Okay, moving on. 2021-02-706. This is a resolution amending the Hartsfield-Trouse County Personnel Policy to include a sick leave policy specifically for COVID-19 and to restore administrative leave. Mayor, I think you can explain this far better than me.
Yes, sir. Up until December 31st or midnight January 1st, if anyone look at it, the federal government had an emergency paid sick leave requirement that went out to all local and state governments and employers over 500, or excuse me, under 500 employees. That expired and that's what we were using as a basis for our COVID-19 sick leave. So we tried to put something in place to cover our employees going forward. We tried to make sure that due to the severity and uniqueness of COVID-19, we had a, created a special leave for this just to try to make sure that they don't use up sick and vacation and all these different things because you could be quarantined for a significant amount of time based on various factors under CDC guidelines. We did look around and participate in some webinars and this is kind of what they recommended in looking at what other communities had done. This is what we came up with. We did tighten it up from what the federal government had done because they had some leave that was being, quite frankly, abused. And so we tightened it up to just two requirements. The federal leave had six. Basically, if you are subject to a federal, state, or local quarantine or isolation order due to COVID-19, as long as you submit a copy of that to the mayor's office of human resources, you can get this leave. And also if you have been advised by a licensed healthcare provider to quarantine or self-isolate due to concerns related to COVID-19. And if you submit the documentation from the healthcare provider to the mayor's office, we will, you'll also be eligible for this leave. The amount of leave is 10 working days. That puts it in line with our FMLA policy that requires after 10 days, you can go on family medical leave. The federal government had also provided a new kind of expanded family medical leave in their package that they did, the emergency basic leave. But for those expired on midnight of January 1st. So we just tried to do it so that would go along with our FMLA and put it in line with that. As far as the sick leave, the 10 working days must be taken consecutively. They cannot intermittent, you can't take a few days here and a few days later. It has to be done all at one time to meet CDC quarantine and self-isolation guidelines. The rate of pay would be the employee's regular way to pay. That's their normally hourly pay without consideration for overtime. Does not, the interaction with other paid leaves. The employee can use the COVID-19 sick leave before using any other accrued leave. If they go over that, like I said, we're looking at FMLA to try to cover any overages up for that. As far as procedure, we ask that they notify their department head as soon as possible on the first day that they need to take that leave. That falls in line with the requirement for the current sick leave. It's just COVID-related specifically. And so that'd be they notify their elected official department head who has to fill out the forms that are included with this documentation, with this resolution. The documentation we're asking for is a copy of the quarantine order, isolation order, doctor's note, or test result that's submitted by their department head or elected official. We hope for no later than 24 hours after they receive the documentation. But we are going to, willing to be flexible on that, given if they're hospitalized or something. Also, they need to submit a signed leave request form and a return to work form once they have been released to return to work or met the CDC guidelines. We are asking that all that be submitted at the same time as their timesheet because we, we have had problems in the past where these leave request forms did not accompany timesheets and it made very difficult to confirm that leave and get them paid properly. Employees who had tested, previously tested positive, this is verbatim from CDC guidelines. They can get this leave, however, they need to contact their healthcare provider. And they need to be showing symptoms, consult their healthcare provider, the healthcare provider sound no other calls for the symptoms or the employee has tested positive again for COVID-19. Again, these are verbatim from CDC guidelines, so we didn't create anything there. We just adopted what CDC has recommended. As far as carryover, this is only for COVID-19. It does not give them any kind of new accrued leave. They don't carry it over going forward. They can't use it for retirement purposes or anything like that. It is just if there, in case they need it. And if they have exhausted their sick leave, again, we structured it for 10 working days and that should transition them seamlessly into the FMLA leave. And then their return to work, we ask that they do submit a return to work form. This is basically to cover the county for any liability. They certified us that they have met the requirements to return to work or they have a note from the doctor that they can return to work and this is to cover us through OSHA or other things to make sure that we've done our due diligence to get them back into work and make sure our employees are protected going forward. And as far as anybody, any employee that takes this leave will not be penalized. They will not be discharged, disciplined, or discriminated against in any way due to work missed due to COVID-19. So that's pretty much a quick rundown of the this proposed policy. If I can answer any questions, if anyone has any.
I have one, one question. It said that it was the pay but did not include any overtime pay. Do we not have some employees that as a part of their regular schedule and their regular pay includes a certain amount of overtime hours? Would that be what their normal pay is for a work week or just what their base pay is?
It would be what their base pay is up to the 10 working days. So if they have 24 scheduled hours, it'd be that base rate pay for whatever. I think sometimes you have the EMS, sometimes they got a 96-hour work week, sometimes they got 120-hour. That's why we did it on 10 working days because their working day is 24 hours versus other departments. But it would be on that base rate.
So they would be paid what their normal pay is for that 96 hours or whatever, or not?
They would be paid what their base rate is. They would not get any overtime compensation for that. It'd be 96 times whatever their base rate of pay is, whether it's 1440 or whatever it is.
Okay. They'd be paid for the full hours, just not. So in essence, in essence, they would be taking a cut in pay? They'd be paid for the full hours, just not, so in essence, in essence, they would be taking a cut in pay?
This is what the current sick leave policy also is, they're paid on that same rate of pay if they take sick leave currently also.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand, I'm just trying to be-
It would not be compensated for any overtime, it'd just be that flat base race of, base rate of pay.
And that's the same way we handle vacation pay now?
That's the same way we currently do the sick leave.
Okay.
It's my understanding, the way we do leave right now, if they do vacation or sick leave, they get paid that base rate, there is no overtime compensation in that sick or vacation leave.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Mr. Ballard, did you look this over, are you comfortable with this, or is that fair question?
As comfortable as we possibly can be, given what we're dealing with, okay? We, we've all, there's been a lot of eyes that has looked at the, uh, over the, over the policy.
Yeah.
It's ran the resolution. We're, we're comfortable, let's put it that way.
Okay, just wanted to make sure you'd looked at it. Okay, thank you. I couldn't imagine you not, but I just wanted-
Oh, no, it's a requirement of the personnel policy, any changes be approved by the county attorney and the county commission, so he's, he was submitted to it, and he did attend the Personnel Committee online as well and voiced his approval of it, and I will not caution, but let everybody know, I believe President-elect Biden does have a platform he proposed to extend what they had had in place previously. I don't know exactly if he's wanting to extend it verbatim or what his timeline is, so we're still gonna move ahead with this. If the federal government passes something that would override what we're doing, well then we'll abide by what they pass, but until the meantime, we don't have anything in place, and so we're gonna move forward with this, and if something happens before the county commission meeting next week, I will update the commission as soon as I know and keep you informed on that.
We really appreciate all y'all's efforts, I know it's been a lot of effort, a lot of hours went into this. And I think it's done very, very well. I appreciate all the effort that's went into it. Commissioners, any other questions on this? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move on, Resolution twenty twenty one oh three seven oh seven. This is a resolution to add La Corneue Lane to the official road name list for emergency services identification. This came forward from the nine one one board. Emergency Communications Board voted on this January twelfth. This is at the intersection of Boat Dock Road and Perrier's Bend. If you're familiar with that road, you go in Frontal Idol, you turn left to go down into the bend, and if you go straight, that becomes Boat Dock Road. This road is right there at that intersection, it's directly across from Perrier's Bend. If you were coming up Perrier's Bend toward town and didn't make the curve, you'd run right up where this road's gonna be. Currently, there's going to be at least two houses up there, possibly three. Because it does split these two roads, felt like it was very much needed to name this drive for these two homes, to avoid any confusion on these two. Any questions on it? Yes, Mr. Buckmaster?
Not sure who would handle it, any way to get an updated map or something for these emergency responders? Because to be honest with you, we haven't seen one in about fifteen years. These roads are not on GPS, they're not on any map anywhere we can find, and most of our emergency responders are not from this town. And I'm hearing huge delays because we're naming these roads.
So a map, a paper map is what you're requesting? I know that's put into the MSAG computer. All the roads are in the computer, so dispatch can tell you exactly where they are, should be able to.
They might can, but they don't. No, they're, my understanding, we can't force any GPS supplier of any kind to update their maps. Many of the roads are incorrect on GPS anyway. And most of the roads that we've named for the last probably seven to ten years are not on any map anywhere, and most people don't know where they're at.
Okay, I think we can bring that up with the nine one one board, I know that we printed paper maps probably six years ago, five, six years ago, that had all the updated road names, I don't think we've done it anytime since then. Have to check with Waylon, I would refer you to him, he's chairman of the nine one one committee.
I asked this very question two years ago, and I asked it again last year. And I apologize if I sounded argumentative, but again, I'm nosy, I listen all the time, I have access to all of the emergency responders, and I'm telling you, this is creating huge delays just by naming these roads, if we left them alone, you'd got help a whole lot quicker.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your opinion on that, but I think you need to bring that opinion to the nine one one board. I'll be glad to tell you when they meet again. It's, they meet quarterly at ten in the morning. I would suggest that you bring that to them. I mean, the whole reason for doing this is to provide better emergency services, it's not to provide less. These two houses, it would be there. Would you address them off Perrier's Bend, would you address them off of Boat Dock Road? Because their entrance is gonna split both roads.
I'm not particularly concerned about this one, the, the Chase Lane, the Iron Gate Lane, Homestead, all, even Inman Lane, far as that goes, Inman Lane's listed as Purvis Lane, Purvis Lane's not named at all. They had a delay getting, I believe, medical out there the other day because it's not correct on a GPS, and we can't make the GPS folks fix it. But I've addressed this with members of the nine one one board to no avail, that's why I, I asked, is there some way we can do something, be honest with you? I'm not inclined to approve another road myself until we get an updated map now.
Well, I guess in the, we will, that's your opinion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could speak on this, I can't speak for the nine one one board, and I'm not gonna presume to do so, however, I can talk about some of these issues we've had. I have in the past submitted something myself that was incorrect, as a matter of fact, the road I lived on was named incorrectly, they had two different roads, the names flipped. And I submitted that to Google, and they said they looked into it, and I was wrong, and I hate to tell them, I told them, I'm sitting in that house right there, I can tell you, you're wrong. And it took them two years, and they got it changed. We did also speak to the Tennessee Department of Transportation, they said they can pass along changes to these companies, however, they can't guarantee they'll be changed, that is up to Google or Garmin or TomTom or whoever, but the paper maps, that is certainly something I think we could look into, we can do that ourselves, but as far as the GPS locations and these other providers, like I said, whether it's Google, whoever, it's kind of up to them to do it, we can't force them, we can submit it to them, but then it's kind of goes in their hopper, and it happens when it happens.
That's been the biggest, biggest issue, even with new addresses on existing roads, is we issue a new address and UPS for two years can't find it in their system because UPS won't update their system with the information that we send them. I mean, this is a problem, has been a problem for, with FedEx, with UPS, the post office, we submit these to them, once they're approved, it goes into the post office's computer, I know that for a fact. As far as us, it's in the MSAG computer, which is the database of addresses in our area, in our county. Everybody should have, be able to have access to that, I know that Chief Catherine sent out a copy of that by email, I know I got one, I don't know who he sent it to, I didn't look to see who was copied on that email, I don't know whether, I can't imagine it not going to emergency response. But I think this is more an issue for the nine one one board to address. This drive needs to be named because of where it's at and the number of homes that are on it. I guess we can refuse to do that, then what happens to these people that are wanting to build homes? They're gonna be happy that we can't give them an address, they're already unhappy that they're having to wait until we name the thing. You know, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is. But I think it's an issue that needs to be brought up to the nine one one board. And I'll be glad to accompany you there and try to support you in that. Any other discussion on this road name? This was the La Corneue property, we did check with the family to make sure that they're okay with naming it that name. They're fine with that. Just wanted y'all to know that, any other questions on it? Next one is twenty twenty one oh four seven oh eight. This is a resolution designating the Hartsell Trouton County Chamber of Commerce as their official tourism organization of the county, mayor?
Yes, sir. The Tennessee Department of Tourism has some grants available, usually around the fall, that are called tourism enhancement grants, we looked at applying for one last year, however, we did not have an officially designated tourism, official tourism organization, so we did not meet the eligibility requirements. The Chamber of Commerce is currently doing a lot of this already, they just recently did a new audio for a battlefield driving tour here in Trouton County, they do other things, so have agreed to serve as the officially designated tourism organization for Trouton County, and we've just asked that you go ahead and recognize this, this doesn't come with any additional funds or anything like that, it's just an official designation that we can use for grants, and they could also be eligible to serve on a tourism board for the Greater National Regional Council. Actually, if they pay, I think it's a hundred dollar membership, they get two seats on that council, and they help with tourism efforts or possible funding, so we would ask that the commission go ahead and designate the Chamber of Commerce as the Trouton County's official tourism organization for those purposes.
Any questions? Okay, everyone's good with that one? Next is Resolution twenty twenty one oh five seven oh nine. This is a resolution to apply for twenty twenty one Tennessee Community Development Block Grant Program for the Water Utility District. Mayor, can you explain it?
Yes, sir. The federal government gives block grants to the states, and they're called community development block grants, they can be used for waterline projects, sewer line projects, they can be used for housing and whatnot. We, our grant administrator usually for this is Ms. Fay Leonard of Vantage Consulting, I did speak to her about several possible projects, one of them was some kind of housing rehabilitation here in the community. There are numerous requirements with this, one of them is it's done on a block, and they look at census numbers and income numbers and all this, we would not meet the low-income requirement in any block that we submitted, she and I went over them looking at maps and whatnot, using Google Maps and property assessor data and all this, and she didn't feel that any of them would meet the requirements, wouldn't score very well on a grant application. The water department asked to look at fixing infiltration and inflow, which is basically rainwater getting into the sewer system. In two thousand seventeen, the Tennessee Department of Environment Conservation did a study for the water department, and found that fifty-eight point four percent of the flow going through the sewer's treatment plants was actually water, rain infiltrating into the sewer system. Once you hit sixty percent, they require you to fix it, so we're trying to get ahead of the curve on that. Just equipment to help find where those issues are and address those issues as we go forward. We currently do have a CDBG grant we're working on, but however, that will be completed here in the next couple of months, and it will be closed out before this new program begins, so we should be eligible for that, neither the water department, the engineer, or Ms. Leonard have any issues going ahead and applying for this, and like I said, we went through a process, had a public hearing and everything, and this is the project that was picked to be what would score the best and be most likely to be funded.
Any questions? Now's your time, if you got a question. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move on. Next, we'll move into ordinances, we'll have three ordinances that are up for a public hearing, we will have a public hearing and a second reading, all of these have passed on first reading. First one is ordinance two oh seven twenty twenty dash twenty-two, this is a rezoning from R one to R two on Halltown Road. Any questions on it? The next one is ordinance two oh eight twenty twenty dash twenty-three, the rezoning from A one to R one on two thirty-one South. Any questions? Any concerns? Next is ordinance two oh nine twenty twenty dash twenty-four, this is a rezoning from C two Commercial to R three on Hayes Avenue. It'd actually be off of Hayes Avenue, I believe. Any questions on it? We, yes, sir, Mr. Buckmaster?
You know what they're proposing to put on this property?
I believe they're proposing to put apartments, apartment units or townhomes. I'm not sure how many, the zoning has to be in place before they can submit a site plan. They would have to meet all the current zoning regulations before they can ask for site plan approval at the planning commission. But my understanding is that, that's what it is.
It's gonna, it's gonna be dense residential townhomes, they're all gonna remain on the same lot, they're gonna have zero lot lines, and it's all gonna be done up on a master deed, so you'd be purchasing the actual house like you would if you bought a townhome in Galveston or wherever, but I'm thinking there's gonna be roughly twenty-five, thirty, but I haven't got a actual solid site plan yet, they gave me a, you know, an estimated site plan. But when I get a solid number, I'll let you know.
Thank you. I was just wondering if it was apartments or townhomes?
It's gonna be single-family townhomes.
Townhome type, yeah. Any other questions on that one? Okay. Those will be a public hearing, and then we'll have a second reading. Next is first reading on ordinance two ten twenty twenty one oh one. This is a rezoning from R one to R two on Andrews Avenue, this will be our first reading on this. This was sent forward from the Planning Commission with a recommendation, recommendation of no, not to to rezone this property to R two. My understanding, and Sam, correct me if I'm wrong, felt like that it was spot zoning, that it was putting an R two residential, multi-residential lot right smack in the middle of a large R one zone. Does that, that sound right, Sam?
I think that's correct, there is a, another duplex that's within a hundred feet of the property. I think this is one of the larger lots out there, duplex would work on it. You know, they, the planning commission had their opinions, and I'm not gonna judge them for it. Now it's, y'all's time to make a decision, it definitely will fit a duplex if that is y'all's decision to rezone. The person that's doing it does build nice houses, so I wouldn't be worried about the look of it.
I think, you know, this has been an issue before, when, when we, we have what's called spot zoning, where you're just taking something, a lot of the ones we've done similar to this have adjoined other zones, the same or commercial property. I think the duplex that Sam mentioned was grandfathered in, it was built way before zoning, is, is why. It is a very large lot, it will accommodate a duplex as far as the lot size itself, the only thing that would keep that from happening would be the zoning. I can, you know, I can see both sides of this issue. It's just, it's up to us to make this decision. I think if you still have questions about it, need to talk to Sam or some of the planning commission members. We have two members of the commission that are on the planning commission now, Mr. Noller and Ms. Baker. I'm sure they'd be glad to talk with you about it if you have further questions. I don't think there's anything we can answer about it now other than that, it's up for first reading. Sam, you have anything else you want to say on it?
If any of y'all have any questions, please call my work cell phone, it's listed on the website, feel free to call, we'll talk about it, we'll discuss the area. And we'll go over the maps together, that way everybody can make a- And we'll go over the maps together. That way everybody can make a educated decision on it and feel comfortable.
I, I believe if it was not as large a lot as it is, there probably wouldn't even be consideration of doing this. But because of the lot size, I think is why they felt like it would be suitable to be able to do it is why their request is.
I agree.
All right. Any other questions about that? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next, our budget amendments. All of our budget amendments went through the Budget and Finance Committee. Came forward with a positive recommendation to approve them. None of them are spending new money. They're all moving money around or allocating funds that are already in the budget. We can go over each one of those. First one is BA one oh one eleven R Animal Shelter. They're wanting to move forty five hundred dollars from their reserve funds to put heating and air conditioning equipment. Upgrade the equipment in the building at the animal shelter. Any questions on it? Next is BA one oh one dash twelve. This is corner medical examiners. Some of this will be reimbursed, or this is where they have reimbursed us for that. Is that correct, Amy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is where Corsetic has reimbursed us for cost for inmate autopsies. And this is just allocating the revenue back for that line item.
Next, BA one oh one thirteen. This is to a request for some of the CARES Act funding from the Election Commission. This was for a little extra pay on election deputies and extra things that they incurred because of COVID, having to buy personal protective gear and signage and cleaning and all those sort of things. And this will be funded out of the CARES Act grant funding, seven thousand one hundred thirty two dollars. Mayor, do you have anything to add on it?
The last item on there was said other charges that covers employee meals for that day. It covers personal protective equipment and also cleaning of several polling locations after polls are closed for the disinfect for COVID. So those charges are under that other charges. And I will say, while early voting was going on, Secretary of State Hargit, whose office is over the elections, did come by and inspect our election commission and our office and how we were proceeding and did speak to several, actually spoke to about five different people at early voted and outside and got their opinions on it. They all were very comfortable with the procedures that have been taken and the social distancing and mask and sanitizing of the office. They all spoke very highly of it. He was very pleased. So as I said, this is just to cover those additional expenses. And these are reimbursements or monies through the CARES Act for those expenses.
They are approved expenses through the CARES Act.
I would also like to clarify that this is a grant just for the election office. This isn't taking from any of our other grants or CARES Act grants.
Any questions? Okay. Next one is an insurance recovery in the Sheriff's Department for a couple of patrol cars that had some minor accidents. Money coming in from insurance and being paid out to fix them to the tune of about seventy four hundred and twenty one dollars. Any questions on it? Okay, next is BA one oh one fifteen. It's five thousand dollars funding for downtown E C D Downtown Grants Program. Are, are part of it in the grant, Mayor?
Yes, I believe I spoke earlier on the steering committee. This would be the actually, excuse me, the committee for the grant. This is actually the grant they will be scoring. And like I said, it's a fifteen, up to fifteen thousand dollar reimbursement through the Department of Economic Community Development. The steering committee for that program for, for House full voted to use that for facade improvements, meaning business owners. If they have the approval of the building owner or the building owner themselves can apply to get up to three thousand dollars assistance in doing improvements on the outside of the building where that signage, painting, windows, lighting, anything on the outside of the building that is visible, either from the street or from the side. They will have to submit an application that is due by March third. Then the scoring committee would go through those and award projects based on a scoring matrix that's put together. The Department of Economic Community Development did help structure all of this documentation and structure the program. And as I said, this is a reimbursement grant through them. So the, the building owners or property or business owner, whoever submitting the application would have to go ahead, pay for these expenses. They would have to cover a quarter of the cost. So they would have to cover, if we're going to do the max, they would have to cover three thousand dollars plus that twenty five percent. And they were only being reimbursed up to the maximum of three thousand dollars. So they have to at least cover twenty five percent of the total project cost. So that would go through that scoring committee. They'll award this. And then once we, they submit it to us, we will go ahead and pay it and then submit to reimbursement through E C D. And the procedure for the reimbursement is done exactly like the streetscape project or the landfill project. We would submit all our documentation. They would look at it, approve it, and then send the funds back to us. So if there's any questions on that, I'll be happy to answer them. If it's more in depth than I can do, Ms. Thomas would probably be able to answer those.
Any questions? Next is BA one oh one sixteen. This is rescue equipment. There was some unused per diem funds in the line item for per diem from the rescue squad. And they would like to take that unused money and use it to purchase some equipment. Just moving it from one line item to the other at their request. Any questions on it? Okay, next we have BA one oh one seventeen. This is EMA radio equipment, where we're upgrading the radio equipment from analog to digital. In all the departments, we're trying to, we've been kind of directed to try to get all of them on digital type equipment. And we've been, been working on this for some time. Any questions on it? It's new radios. Okay, next is BA one oh one eighteen fire equipment. Much like the, the one for the rescue squad, there's per diem money left over that they did not use. They won't use it to provide equipment, some new air packs so that each firefighter can have their own individual air packs. Chief Woodard explained that at the budget and finance. If there's any other questions, I'm sure he'd be glad to answer them. Did I explain that well enough, you think, Mayor?
I believe it was, and Chief Wood is here and he can explain. And I'll go over, I think it was to replace several air packs and then buy up to twenty three masks, I think. So they wouldn't have to share masks during a pandemic. And I think that was the bulk of the expenditures was the, the replacement of those air packs in the fan.
Anybody have any question on that? Don't see anybody. Next is BA one oh one nineteen, is to fund a wage study. This was, we've talked about at budget time last year, trying to get a study of our wage situation in comparison with other counties our size in the surrounding counties. And we sent this out for proposals and this went through Personnel Committee and they recommend that we go with this. I think it's Thompson and Associates. Is that it, Mayor?
I think it's Barris, Barris, Thompson and Associates. And I went back and looked. The proposal was included in an email I sent out to the commission on about December sixteenth. And it should have, the first email should have two proposals, one from Mike Humphries. And the second one is from B T A, which would be Mr. Thompson's group. And then after that, we received a third one from Larry Russell. And I sent that one on the next day. So that'd be December seventeenth. If you could go back and check your emails from those dates, if you did not receive that, please let me know and I'll resend that. But the B T A proposal is the one that the planet, the Personnel Committee voted to recommend. So you can go back and review that, that proposal right there. And we can answer any questions or reach out to Mr. Thompson, get clarification of anything on any questions we don't have the answers to.
We're trying to do this so we'll have hard numbers, scientific information. If, you know, if you ask all twenty of us how much we pay people, you're going to get twenty different answers, I'm sure. So this is to try to get us some hard data so that we can make some valid decision, database decision and not gut decisions. And I think we have one more where we're receiving funds from the, into the debt service fund from the school board. Was supposed to pay the first payment on the Jim Satterfield Middle School roof project. They have sent those funds in. We will put them into the budget. We have to have a, bring them in so that we can pay it back out later. And that's what that one is. It's an in and out type thing. Notaries. We have several more, I think, that will be added. So I'll just give you that list next week. Rita made mention that she needed to add a few to it. That's pretty much as far as our agenda next week. I think we'll try to meet in person unless something happens. So go ahead and plan on being at the courthouse if you can. Is there any other business? Any other business? Anything any commissioners want to bring up, talk about? This is the best time for us to do that because this is, this is an informational work session. It's not just about next week. It's about anything that we've got going on that we, we have concerns about. Mr. Buckmaster, I appreciate what you said and we'll try to address that with the nine one one board. I certainly understand how it causes confusion and I have to deal with it a lot, believe me. But we will address that or attempt to.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Please wave. Bye bye. That looks unanimous. We are adjourned.